Good evening and welcome to the April 21st, 2021, meeting of the Oceanside City Council. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our city clerk, Zeb Navarro, for an advisory.
Thank you. We have the following meeting advisory. We are excited to offer public participation in person at meetings again. Please bear in mind that the council chambers are open with a limited capacity, as per the state's guidelines. We will ensure that all persons who wish to speak on an agenda item will be given an opportunity to speak. I will call speakers by name so that you will know when it is your turn. We respectfully request that you exit the chambers once you are finished commenting on your item to assist us in maintaining capacity restrictions. Please follow the guiding path to enter and exit the meeting. If you require assistance, please let a staff person know. And with that, I'll go ahead and take the role. Mayor Sanchez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kine? Councilmember Jensen?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you, and I'd like to ask everyone to stand, please, for the invocation. Tonight, we are going to have the invocation by Father Anthony Garibaldi, who is from the mission, the old historic mission, San Luis Rey. Father Garibaldi, thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening. May the Lord give you peace. God, you make the sun shine on all people and make it rain on all people. Give us the grace to imitate you and treat all the residents of Oceanside equally. Lord, as you know, this area has been the home of many people over the centuries, from the Luseno's to the present. You became Oceanside in 1888, and thank you for leading others to join us in our community. You command us, love your neighbor as yourself. Give us the strength to do just that, to treat each other as each of us wants to be treated. This evening, we continue to ask you to assist us in preventing the spread of the COVID virus, to heal those who have the virus, and to embrace all those who have died due to the virus. Protect those who serve our country and all first responders who serve us. Let us all work for peace. Inspire these, our council leaders, to seek the common good and to encourage all of us here in Oceanside to be good neighbors. Thank you for Oceanside, our leaders, and our residents, and our beautiful city. Please, God, continue to bless us. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First up, we have a presentation. Under Proclamations and Presentations, we have first a presentation by the Alliance for Regional Solutions, and this is being presented by Don Stumpf of the North County Lifeline and Greg Angel of Interfaith Community Services. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, and thank you for having us. Frequently, when I do presentations about the Alliance, I have to let people know that I'm taking off my North County Lifeline hat and I'm putting on my Alliance for Regional Solutions hat. And it's the, it's really the collaboration that helps us all do more in this community. So I've been with Lifeline for 14 years, and the Alliance began 15 years ago in 2006. And it was formed by nine North County cities, the county of San Diego, nonprofit agencies like Interfaith and Lifeline, and the United Way to unite and coordinate previously disparate homeless shelters in North County. Can we go back? We created a mechanism for equitable distribution of city funds to support the Winter Shelter Network. So basically, shelters existed in isolation, and under the Alliance, they came together and looked at how we could create a network of sheltering system. The Alliance's vision is to be a recognized leader in building community that will create a safe, thriving, resilient North County for all. Our mission is to convene stakeholders, coordinate, and advocate for innovative, real solutions to existing and emergency community needs. And the font is very small here, but you can see that the representation of cities, government, philanthropy, and nonprofit organizations is huge. And we really consider the Alliance sort of the family table in North County, where if we want to come together for solutions, this is where you come. Recently, one of the things that the Alliance did was we created an impact study. And so we looked at the membership of the Alliance and those 75 members. And actually, we only got data from 30 of the 75. But what we discovered is that this group, which is primarily about human services and other ways in which we support the community, has had a huge impact. We have over 8,700 jobs that are supported, both directly and indirectly, through all our partner organizations. And then the Alliance, you know, the data showed, brought in a total of $618 million in revenue directly and $1.2 billion indirectly. And this amounts to 3% and 6% portion, respectively, of San Diego's total revenues for the social advocacy industry. And so that original vision of the Alliance, to be that convening body around the Winter Shelter Network, has grown. And we did a strategic planning session, I think it was probably in 2009, and started creating the larger collaborative, the larger family table. And so through that, we have a steering committee which guides the group. We have the Bridge to Housing Network, which is that original homeless shelter group. We have the North County Food Policy Council, North County Works, who are all our schools and workforce builders, the Case Managers Network, the Senior Alliance, which is a coordination of all those that provide services to seniors, the CEO Group, which I chair, which is all the nonprofit CEOs and some city representatives in the region. We also have a couple of elected officials from the state and the national level that are attending now. And then the North County Transition Age Youth, so for young adults, and then our Racial Justice Committee. And so our breadth has become huge. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. It's great to be here with you tonight. And to share the presentation with my colleague, Don Stumpf, we're both members of the Steering Committee of the Alliance for Regional Solutions, and we're both the past, immediate past chairs. Our current chair is with Vista Community Clinic. I want to thank you in particular, and we want to do a little bit of a deep dive in the couple minutes we have left on homelessness. It's obviously one of the most pressing issues of our time today, and it's what started the Alliance. And it's still one of the things that we work together across nonprofits, across cities, to address this regional issue with a regional set of strategies and deliverables. You have invested in the Regional Bridge to Housing Network. As Don mentioned, it used to be the Winter Shelter Network. But guess what? They all operate year-round now. So we are working on bridging people out of homelessness into shelter, into housing of their own. Your funding supports three brick-and-mortar shelters, as well as the Interfaith Shelter Network that operates in a rotational basis. That one is still seasonal. I wanted to give you some statistics from the most recently completed shelter season. Your support helped more than 800 unique individuals access shelter. I'll go right to the bottom line. You got almost 250 of them directly into stable house through your support and through your partnership with other North County cities and with other providers. You can see some of the statistics of who we're working with here. I will call out one in particular. Only 9% of the nearly 1,000 individuals who you helped in shelter were in the shelter system the year before. The Regional Task Force on the Homeless just came out with a report that found the number of new individuals, region-wide, accessing services for the first time, first time in need of help, more than doubled in the year of 2020, in a year when there were no formal evictions. We see the realities and the challenges of homelessness on our streets every day, and we want to share with you the importance and the outcome that a shelter can have in helping people overcome that and some of the issues that you see people are dealing with. We want to share some other accomplishments that the Alliance has helped with, with your support. Couple of years ago, the state of California had one-time money to address homelessness. And the Alliance, we worked together with the city of Oceanside, with eight North County cities, with dozens of nonprofit members, to actually secure more funding for North County than any other region, including a $200,000 grant directly to the city of Oceanside to support your homeless outreach team and your case managers to get people into housing and to help them be successful. You all have participated, Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor Sanchez, on the North County Homeless Action Committee. That committee's work, secured through the County Board of Supervisors, just this month. Unanimous approval for 10 full-time clinical social workers to do outreach, to help people on the streets to access available services and to get into programs that can help them get into housing. That will be housed within the county of San Diego. There will be a priority allocation right here in Oceanside. That's the result of your work and our partnership through the Alliance. There are some other things that the Alliance is continuing to do amid COVID. Wanted to really give you, though, the deep dive on homelessness, given how pressing it is. And we, both Don and I, on behalf of our larger Steering Committee and on behalf of our 75 member organizations, working together in partnership, appreciate your support. And we're here for any questions or comments, but wanted to thank you for your wisdom to invest in proven effective partnership.
Thank you very much. And we're open for questions if you have any.
Thank you for that presentation. Do you know by chance what percentage of the funding revenues you discussed comes from government subsidy versus private fundraising?
We don't have that breakdown in that report, but I could probably get it for you and provide it as a follow-up if you'd like.
Please do. Thank you.
And the unique part about the funding that we get for the Winter Shelter, a unique aspect of the funding that we get for the Winter Shelter Network is it's actually leveraging other dollars that organizations like Interfaith, Catholic Charities, gain from other sources, and many of them private sources, to build their whole system up there.
That is indeed what public funds are able to do, right, is generate even more funding from outside. Yeah. Well, thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation, which is in honor of Mayor's Monarch Pledge. And there's going to be a picture that's coming up. Basically, at a recent meeting of the San Diego County Division of the League of California Cities, and the League of California Cities has members, all cities are members of the League of California Cities in the state of California. We had a presentation about something that is happening, actually, countrywide, and that is that we are beginning to lose and possibly have, possibly have extinct, become extinct, the magnificent monarch butterfly that you see on the screen here. We are so used to seeing this very iconic butterfly come every year at a certain time of the year. I mean, I think you go to the zoo and the Wild Animal Park, and there are, you know, exhibits and all that. And believe it or not, we were asked to please help each city to do something to be able to ensure the continued preservation of this very iconic butterfly. As a mayor, this is called the Mayor's Monarch Challenge. Each mayor was asked to do a proclamation and to make commitments on behalf of their cities and residents and in speaking with the city manager and other staff. We felt that this is something that we could do, that we could actually help ensure the continued viability of the monarch butterfly. So here is the 2021 proclamation, and we're actually going to be asked to report back in a year to see how we've done. And for now, this indicates that we are going to be doing outreach to our community. Internally, as a city, we have a number of possibilities with respect to landscaping and community gardens. For, and basically, the habitat for the monarch butterfly is a milkweed. So we have been asked to see where we can plant milkweed within our landscaping and within, you know, and then also within groups, city groups. And so as part of this proclamation, and one of the paragraphs is, "Whereas every citizen of Oceanside can make a difference by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. And whereas, on behalf of the citizens of Oceanside, along with other mayors in the county of San Diego and in the state of California, I have signed the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge to create healthy habitat of milkweed and other nectar-producing plants to help save these magnificent butterflies so that the monarch will once again flourish across the Southwest and continent." We have, in fact, lost over 90% of the population on the eastern part of the country. And in the western part of the country, where we are, we've lost over 99% of the monarch. So now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim today, April 21st, 2021, as the Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the city of Oceanside, and ask that all citizens consider planting milkweed, the source of food for the monarch caterpillar, and join me in reaching out to schools, garden groups, homeowners associations, landscape districts, and community gardens, and research ways to sustain this beautiful species, issued this day, April 21st, in Oceanside, California. So that is something that we can all do, and I ask you to join me in that. Thank you. Next, we have the Employee Service Awards, and I'd like to ask staff to come on up and present, do the presentation about the great works that our employees have been able to do for many years, up to, what is it, 25 years? Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of City Council. Jenny Yabara, Human Resource Mission. Although the health orders have recently been adjusted and abundance of caution, we will continue to recognize those employees who have reached the accomplishment of 20 or more years with the city of Oceanside virtually. It is our hope that in the near future, we'll be able to recognize, once again, our employees in person. It is my pleasure to begin tonight's presentation with employees that have completed 20 years of service. Juan Azote, Wastewater Plant Operator 3, Water Utilities. Jimmy Javier Bermudez, Management Analyst, Neighborhood Services. Kenneth Birmingham, Maintenance Worker 3, Public Works. Audrey Calderwood, Senior Field Evidence Technician, Police Department. Louis Chavez, Code Enforcement Officer 2, Neighborhood Services. Adriana Ching, Wastewater Plant Operator 2, Water Utilities. Julie Cook, Program Specialist, Public Works. Armando Fernandez, Human Resource Division Manager. Valentina Gascalum, Office Specialist 2, Neighborhood Services. Thomas Hansen, Meter Service Worker 2, Water Utilities. Donald Kiefer, Water Plant Operator 3, Water Utilities. Christine Morales, Community Outreach Coordinator, Library Department. Efrain Reyes, Instrument Technician 2, Water Utilities. Mitchell Reilia, Senior Distribution Operator, Water Utilities. Hedrick Sadler, Police Lieutenant, Police Department. Eiko Speck, Library Technician, Library. Billy Wees, Police Sergeant, Police Department. Next, we have the employees who have dedicated 25 years of service. Adam Nolan, Police Captain, Police Department. Mike Taale, Police Officer, Police Department. Thomas Weir, Police Sergeant, Police Department. And finally, we have one employee this quarter who has achieved 35 years of service. Juan Gomez, Senior Meter Service Worker, Water Utilities. On behalf of the city of Oceanside, I offer our congratulations to everyone recognized this evening and thank them for their continued commitment to our community. Please join me in a round of applause for tonight's recipients.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Closed Session Report, item number three. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. The council met earlier in closed session to discuss item one on the agenda, which was a conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Fire Management Association. There was discussion and direction, but no action to report under the Brown Act. Item two, Conference with Legal Counsel on Anticipated Litigation involving the claim filed by Walid Hana. The claim numbers referenced on page two of the agenda involving the AMPM mini-market. Again, that claim was discussed, direction was provided, but there's no action under the Brown Act at this time to report.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda are Consent Calendar Items. That's items four through nine. I understand there are no requests from the public to pull?
That is correct. There is no request from the public to pull any items.
Okay, I understand that Councilmember Jensen wishes to add some comments to item number four. No comment? Okay, great. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Weiss?
I'll move approval, but I'd like to pull item six to make a comment.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'd like to pull item eight.
So there's a motion to, there is a request to pull items six and eight, and there's a motion and a second to approve the balance. Let's vote on the balance, please.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number six. That is adoption of resolutions for each of the city's 11 Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts, initiating the proceedings for renewal of the districts.
I just wanted to comment that it appears that with most of these districts, we are using the fund balance reserves to pay for ongoing operating costs. And with at least three of them, Marlato, Peacock Hills, and Rancho Hermosa, we are about out of money in the reserve accounts for all of them. So I just want to make sure that the staff is putting some kind of a plan together. So obviously, I don't expect it for the May 19th public hearing, but at some point over the next year, that we need to have a plan in place to address the ongoing shortfall in all of these districts. And with that, I'll move approval.
I'll second that. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight is adoption of a resolution appropriating $3.479 million in road maintenance and rehabilitation account funds provided by Senate Bill 1 to City Gas Tax Fund 265 and approving the city's project list for 2021 to 2022. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Deanna, is there a staff member that can answer any of my questions on this item?
David Toshack can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I see this item on consent, and I understand that our city follows a mechanism on road repairs to prioritize and, in essence, have the highest and best use of funding that we do receive. With respect to SB 1, is, when were we aware of this amount that we would receive? Do you have an idea of how long we've known about this amount for planning purposes?
Yes, Councilmember, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and Councilmember Rodriguez. The reports come out, and we typically use them the first of the year, January 20, this year, 21, 2021. So typically, we get the information in January. And just last week, I followed up with our admin staff, and they confirmed the number hasn't changed. The number might change based on revenues, and when that happens, if we get received more money or less money, we'll come back to council with appropriation of additional funds.
Very good. I notice you list milestone amounts for each of the areas, including slurry seal, asphalt overlay, storm drain, et cetera. The largest amount, the largest amount I see is on asphalt overlay. And in the actual breakdown, there are several streets listed, and the overlays will have a useful life of 15 years. How are these streets decided over others?
Okay, so in that case, we basically have our PMP, which shows a chart. In our program, we have a chart as the roads decay. We can identify a PCI in which best to preserve a road or do an overlay. In this case, since our PCI is fairly low, being an older city, we focus on overlays as the best option. So those are identified in the PMP, and we create the list based on a map. We have a citywide map that we have posted on the webpage at this point, so people can go into the webpage and see a color-coded map of locations.
So does a human make the decision or a computer make the decision on the roads?
We've recently changed, in 2013, we brought on a company that actually drives a street with a van, and it has sensors on it, including deflection testing, where they actually apply a pressure, and they can actually measure the deflection of the street, and they come up with a PCI rating for that street. So it's a combination of both. Previously, about five to 10 years ago, or actually, 10 years ago, it was all visual. Now, we use a little more technology, and we can gather the data much quicker by driving a van to actually all the streets that we have.
Okay, very good. Just piggybacking on our CIP workshop we had, Oceanside streets need a lot of work to bring us up to speed. And so I would just, as we get more and more funding, we need to prioritize our roads and get them up to speed. But thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Motion?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you. I'll second. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. Next are general items, begin with item number 10, which is Identification of City-Owned Parks and Recreation Facilities for which the city council will take applications for renaming. As per City Council Policy 100-55, two include Alex Road Skate Park and the El Corazon Aquatic Center. We have a report by Mark Olson, Parks and Recreation Division Manager. Mr. Olson?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, staff, and members of the public. It's good to be with you this evening. My name is Mark Olson, the Parks and Recreation Division Manager. My privilege to bring before you this evening for consideration the Identification of City-Owned Parks and Recreation Facilities for Renaming. A bit of synopsis. Staff recommends that the city council identify city-owned parks and recreation facilities for which to accept applications for renaming as per the Council Policy 100-55, and to include Alex Road Skate Park and the El Corazon Aquatic Center for consideration. Council Policy 100-55 was adopted in May of 2003 and has been used in the naming of Luceno and Mans Buchanan Parks, as well as the El Corazon Senior Center. The two facilities that we are recommending for consideration, as well as other decisions by the council, the Alex Road Skate Park was completed in 2013 under the project name Alex Road Skate Park. Alex Road is, of course, named for Alex Deutsch, who was one of the Alex Road is, of course, named for Alex Deutsch, who was one of the founders of one of the largest manufacturing companies here in Oceanside many years ago. A formal naming process for this project was never undertaken, and the project name moved forward and was adopted as the facility name at project completion. A request to change the name to Prince Park was received in 2017, but no formal process was undertaken. A new application to rename the facility Prince Park came to us in September of 2020, renewing the interest. The El Corazon Aquatic Center, this is a project that broke ground in October of 2019 and is currently nearing completion. The name is derived from the location on the El Corazon property, consistent with the El Corazon specific plan. The city received several emails in January of 2021 requesting the name of the facility to be named after the late Bill Wagner, the Oceanside High School Swimming and Basketball Coach, and a strong, large member of the community. Now, Policy 100-55 outlines the process for which naming facility, city facilities shall be followed. And in April of each year, the council must designate these facilities for consideration of renaming. If facilities are designated, applications will be made available to the public with the deadline of June 1st, 2021. After review of the applications, they will be referred to the Parks and Recreation Commission with staff recommendations in accordance with the criteria of Council Policy 100-55. Should any facilities be designated for renaming, a monument sign will be required at each of those facilities at a cost of around approximately $15,000 per sign. The Parks and Recreation Commission voted 8, 0 to 1 to recommend the City Council designate Alex Road Skate Park as a facility for which the application should be taken for renaming. Request to rename El Corazon Aquatic Center had not been received at the time of the agenda preparation, and therefore was not considered by the Parks and Recreation Commission. Again, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council identify city-owned parks and recreation facilities for which to accept applications for renaming, as per City Council Policy 100-55, and to include Alex Road Skate Park and the El Corazon Aquatic Center. With that, I'm happy to take any question.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go to the council. We have one person?
We do have one in-person speaker on this item. Arlene Hammer Schmidt. And again, you have three minutes. You'll see the other podium there. Green means go, yellow means you have one minute left, and red means that's it.
You remember Arlene, right?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. It's really good to be here in person. And that's off agenda, but well done, City of Oceanside. The, all I want to say about this is in renaming a Parks and Recreation Facility, I don't know what the policy states. I would like to see names, facilities named for positive role models, that we would like to see their lives repeated. That's all I have to say. And Bill Wagner, definitely, we need more of them. So that's it. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the public.
Thank you. And before we get to, go to the rest of the council, I do have a request that we add a skate park at MLK. Because when I was going, talking to the community, the skateboard community, there was another name that came up, who was an absolute phenomenal skateboarder, and that was Shane Idalgo. Shane was born in Oceanside, went to Oceanside High School, began very, very young as a surfer, and then, very, very young, then started skateboarding. He ended up doing so well, he was picked up by Gravity, which is a skateboard company in Encinitas. He skated for Gravity. If you, if you Google his name, Shane Idalgo, you'll see so many videos of him skating. He also taught the kids over at MLK Skate Park. And he tragically also died in 2012. It was a, he was on his way to compete in Mexico. That's what he did. He competed, and he gave so much as well to the community here in Oceanside. And unfortunately, he was a passenger in a car that had an accident, and he died as a result of that accident. He is someone that is still very, very well-known and admired. In fact, just a week ago, there was a memorial that was done over at MLK Park, where a lot of the skaters got together to honor him. So he still has a huge influence in our skateboard community. He was a very, very positive person, and for unity, I'm asking that we include MLK Park, so that we can be able to have what the residents are asking for, and that is for Alex Skate Park to be formally recognized as Prince Park, and also honor Shane Idalgo at MLK Park. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. I definitely support that, the comments by Mayor Sanchez. I, you know, as much as I appreciate and respect council policy, it's important that we all acknowledge that it is just a guideline, and it's subject to community feedback and ultimately this, this body. And I appreciate staff bringing, you know, a recommendation with the El Corazon Aquatic Center, and it, we all, you know, it went outside the standard policy. Didn't go to Parks and Rec. We brought it forth, we make it happen. Staff's recommendations, I appreciate, state, staff recommends that the City Council identify city-owned parks and recreation facilities for which to accept applications for renaming. And so I say we open, we open them all up. Every park that doesn't have an official name, we open them up, and we allow the application process to unfold, and many of them won't have an application submitted on them, and it goes to those appropriate channels. But what I do know, in, in my experience as an elected official and going to these unique communities, one of which is the skate community, Alex Road Skate Park is Prince Park to them. They will always call it that, they, they know it as that, and that's the micro-unique community and culture that has named that. And they're going to, they're going to submit an application, and it's going to go through that process. And I'm not in that world, they are, but they're residents of Oceanside, and I respect their ideas and their participation in this process. And so, you know, I would just say that any, any city park, and I'll, like my colleagues' feedback, including Martin Luther King, to be open for appropriate application and feedback from the community, because that anchors our community even more to be involved on a civil level, as well as a community at these parks. You mentioned that the El Corazon Senior Center went through the naming process. Is that, was that the name it went through to be decided, or has the El Corazon Senior Center not been named yet? I was under the impression it hasn't been named yet.
It has.
It has. So that's the official name through this process?
Well, there's a Native American name, right, to it?
Councilman Rodriguez, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, the El Corazon Senior Center has gone through a formal naming process. The El Corazon Aquatic Center has not been completed. That is a separate facility. Want to make sure there's that distinction there. But the Senior Center has gone through the formal process.
And so its name is officially, so it's not after an individual, it's after El Corazon. It's not after an individual?
Precisely, yes.
Okay, got it.
Or the location of the Senior Center on the El Corazon property.
Got it.
Right, it's the heart of the city. I think that a lot of people felt very strongly about that, yeah.
Okay. But that, but then what about the Aquatic Center? It's, the Aquatic Center is the heart of the city. You know, is everything going to be named El Corazon? Like, that's just what I'm saying. Like, where do we draw the line? So that's fine. It went through the formal process, so we, we'll leave that alone. So that would, that's my idea. I want to hear what other council members have to say, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. And just a question, quick question. One of the reasons why we decided to do a process was, I think it came out of naming Melba Bishop Park, and, and also the, the bridge, that was a toll bridge, right? It was named after, so we had those two issues come up. And so one of the things that we wanted to do was to see if we can find corporate sponsors and, you know, have, have an actual formal process. Councilmember Weiss?
Yeah, I have been asked by several different people that we at least consider looking at naming a park or building after former Mayor Jim Wood. So I would ask that, you know, kind of in line with what Councilmember Rodriguez said, if there are opportunities out there, when you get the applications, I say you take them in for whatever might not have a formal name at this point.
Okay, so we have so far, Council, Deputy Mayor Keim, did you want to, I think I accidentally took your name off there?
Is there, was, is there a motion?
Not yet, but what I'm hearing is for the Parks and Rec Commission to be able to entertain a facility to be named after former Mayor Jim Wood, and also to go forward on this recommendation of the staff, as well as, I'm putting out, MLK Skate Park.
I'm open to supporting a motion with Martin Luther King Skate Park included. I just don't want it to be, I don't want 50 different applications come in and dilute the process and be unproductive. So why don't we, staff, do you have a recommendation on a productive way to open it up?
Can, okay, can we make a motion that, that the Parks and Rec Commission consider Alex Road Skate Park, El Corazon Aquatic Center, MLK Skate Park, and another facility for the naming after former Mayor Jim Wood, who served probably the longest?
I'll second that.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I will third that. Yeah, I really appreciate Councilmember Weiss bringing up Mayor Jim Wood. I definitely want to see, see something important named after him. He committed over 46 years of public service to this city and loved by many, and I would, I would like to see that process unfold, so thank you.
Thank you. That would be not consistent with the policy recommended, let's just say, call it a recommended policy, because he is still, you know, he's still with us, and I would prefer to be able to honor him while he's still around, and we can, you know, you know, put it, you know, drive him around the, the park, or whatever it is, wherever we go. So I don't see any more lights. Councilmember Jensen, did you want to say something?
I was just going to ask, how many parks do we have that have not been formally named?
Councilmember Jensen, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, I can get back to you on that. We have many parks, most of them do have a name, but we can certainly, at the direction that has been provided, identify those that don't have a formal name, and then use those for the consideration of the direction.
Thank you. No more lights, please vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you. Next is item number 11, which is Introduction of an Ordinance to Amend All Articles of the City of Oceanside Municipal Traffic Code. And this is a report by Hans-Kyle Koger, Public Works Director.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Kyle Koger, Public Works Director. Tonight, I'll be talking about an ordinance to amend all articles of the Oceanside Municipal Traffic Code. A little background on this item, we completed a downtown parking action plan in 2020 to guide policies and regulations for parking. Some of the recommendations that came out of the study were to, we needed to update our municipal traffic code, develop a mobile payment app and support services, and transition to a virtual parking permit system. The municipal traffic code pertaining to parking regulations hasn't been updated in many years. Staff told me before the meeting, it's been probably about 40 years since it's been updated. Majority of updates include format and organizational changes, as well as definitions. There's just been a lot of new technology, street name changes, position changes that have occurred in that period of time that need to be updated. Other updates included updates for new technology, permits, an oversized vehicle parking restriction, and electric vehicle parking regulations. Code updates will allow for implementation and management of new features and revised policies. It'll provide for better management of electric vehicle charging station spaces and oversized vehicles. It allows the accommodation of a mobile payment application, and allowance of virtual permitting for beach residential and employee parking permits. The mobile payment app will allow users to pay for parking through their smartphone. Virtual, virtual permit will be offered online and can be purchased from a computer or smartphone, and permits will be based on license plate numbers. We're trying to get away from hanging tags or stickers. Some notable amendments to the traffic code, we had many sections that were just reorganized without any substantial changes. One of the things we looked at is time parking zones. We strengthened language pertaining to the unlawful transfer of paid park, paid parking receipts, and restrict reparking in time zones to encourage vehicle turnover. This is something that the business community wanted. We added a provision prohibiting parking within 500 feet of the time limit parking space, or within the same parking structure or lot, no sooner than double the supposed time limit. We set electric vehicle parking regulations. Again, this is a fairly new technology that was not in the old code. We were looking, looking to establish an industry standard target, target occupancy rate of 85% based upon parking data for better parking management. I can talk more about that a little later. And we also are clarifying the future rate increases within the coastal zone, which are subject to coastal development permit requirements. We're looking to modify beach area permit parking program to clarify evidence necessary to establish residency. The same permit, we're actually, it used to be a three-year, three-year permit, and we're saying we'd like to make it a one-year permit, and we're removing some sections out of the traffic code that have been superseded by state statute. Another part of the ordinance is we're introducing an oversized vehicle parking restriction. Staff has received numerous complaints in the past two years from citizens and business owners due to the number of oversized vehicles parked or stored in residential or commercial areas. I've personally received hundreds myself. This situation creates safety issues such as inadequate site distance from driveways and intersections. Staff has noticed illegal dumping of sewage, waste, and trash, which represents a health hazard. It leads to degradation of neighborhoods and reduction in quality of life, and it negatively impacts the economic vitality of businesses. What we're looking to do with this restriction is set an overnight oversized vehicle, no parking restriction from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., except by permit or other exemptions, to be consistent with other San Diego County cities. Oceanside is currently one of only three cities that does not have an overnight ordinance, so we're looking to change that. The no parking from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. is fairly consistent with a lot of cities in, in the area. The oversized vehicle is any vehicle is defined as any vehicle that exceeds 25 feet in length, seven feet in width, or seven feet in height. And this ordinance also covers unattached trailers or non-motorized vehicles, which are any trailer, travel trailer, tow dolly, semi, semi-trailer, boat trailer, utility trailer, or other vehicle without means of self-propulsion. Those that will be eligible for these permits are residents and out-of-town visitors that may apply for the permit, and permits may be obtained for up to a 24-hour period and up to six permits per month, which is fairly consistent with what other cities are doing. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council introduce an ordinance to amend all articles of the City of Oceanside Municipal Traffic Code. I have staff here with me to help answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And this is an ordinance, it would become effective after a second reading, 30 days after a second reading?
Yes.
Okay, so we will be providing notice somehow to people. Think this is also going to include our homeless Think this is also going to include our homeless population as well as residents who have RVs parked on public streets? So, thank you. And we have one person?
Yes, we do, we do have one speaker on this item. Our only speaker on this item is Everett Quivvy. And whenever you're ready, you could start.
Hello, thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, and Staff. My name is Everett Quivvy, 1810 Broadway Street. And that's Broadway and the train tracks and Gasly leading towards the beach access. It's a neighborhood with quite a few overnight vehicles parked and also boat trailers in driveways, which is not addressed in the overview or summary. I'm in opposition to those bans. The staff has worked great on bringing us into the new technology and electric vehicles. But as Mayor rightly pointed out, there's, there's an interesting interplay between the character of the residents and the city here with overnight vehicles. It is not a safety concern to have a vehicle parked between six, or 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning. I know because I commute to work during those hours, and I'm the only vehicle moving on the streets. There's no issue with sight lines, and the length of the vehicle doesn't affect sight when properly parked away from a well-designed intersections, although you have street lighting. If safety was a concern, it would be a concern when the vehicles mix with other traffic during the daylight busy hours. But this ban on overnight vehicle parks is focused on 2:00 to 6:00 a.m., that's when people sleep, and some people do sleep in their vehicles. We recognize a class, in fact, condone a class of overnight sleepers. And here in Oceanside, it's surf fans, it's weekend travelers, it's the Instagram vans, I call them that, these high-panel vans, they're custom-designed off of like a Mercedes Sprinter-type base, to be just short of 25 feet and just short of seven feet. Yet they do use our streets, and I think we invite them to, for experiencing Oceanside. A ban on larger vehicles would be, in my opinion, unjust. It takes the same activities, sleeping on the streets for a night, and prohibits it if you have an older or larger vehicle, yet while condoning it with a smaller Sprinter van. Next, and it wasn't addressed in overview, is parking of a boat trailer in your own driveway. There was not a justification given for doing this, unlike the vehicle ban, and I can't think of any one either. Oceanside is, is Oceanside, we all have a very close tide of the water here, and I see it in boats, but we have surfers, we have lifeguards, we have marines, we have fishermen. I think it's right and proper that we would be able to see these in the driveways of our neighborhoods. I currently don't have a boat or driveway, I live in apartments, or an RV, so my interest in this is really for my future self and the future of Oceanside. I should hope that the future Oceanside, you could still park a hometown hobby cat in your driveway. I think that would be something to be proud of, and I urge you to not adapt those particular amendments in the new ordinances. Good work on the other stuff, though, I read through it, and I'm, I'm excited for the future.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Koger, did you want to respond or to that, to those comments, the smaller vehicles that just, just, just a bit smaller, it will not apply to, I think is what he said?
That's correct. An oversized vehicle is 25 feet in length, seven feet high, seven feet wide. If you're under that, then this doesn't apply to you. We still have rules for 72 hours consecutive parking on the street, that, that didn't go away. The section of the code that he's referring to, we actually moved that from, I think, Section 13 to Section 10, we didn't change it, that's always been on the books. You can park a, a trailer in your driveway for up to 72 hours, and then it needs to be moved. That, that's something that we have not changed.
Mr. Muller, did you want to say?
Yeah, I'd just echo that, that was in Chapter 13 formally, and it's now been moved to Section 10.29, verbatim. There haven't been any changes with respect to that, so, so that, that's really not an issue with this amendment.
Thank you, back to the council, Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you, I have a question in regards to, on page two of your staff report where you're setting the industry standard target occupancy rate of 85%. So I'm presuming that when you do that, at some point, obviously not now, but there'll be dynamic pricing based on the overall occupancy rate. But you also had mentioned that the permits eventually are going to be tied to license plates, how are you going to measure license plates and occupancy rates?
I mean, surveys, we've done them before, where we, we survey areas and determine, you know, what the occupancy rate is. We'll look at a market structure, a street at, on a Wednesday and on a Saturday over the summer, outside of the summer, so we'll do surveys to determine what the occupancy rate is. This is, this is really kind of a planning tool that many other cities use. They use the occupancy rate to determine, maybe we need to create more paid parking or adjust prices, and so it can be used for a lot of different reasons.
But I thought at one point there was a comment about the license plate, the, the permits are going, your, your parking fees are going to be based on your license plate?
So permits will be tied to your license plate? So instead of a tag or sticker, you'll be able to go online, put your license plate number in, it'll be set when the parking officer goes by, they have a license plate reader, they'll read your tag, they'll say, this person is paid. Did I answer your question?
No, you did, so they'll have a license plate reader.
We, we have license plate readers now that we will use for enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
How much are the, are the permits going to cost? Have you decided that yet?
For oversized vehicle?
Yeah.
We have not, we're, tonight we're just setting the policy.
Right.
Staff still has to look at the costs and determine, we hope it's a nominal fee, because we know this is a change for the public.
Right, and, and you're going to come to as close to net neutral as possible?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Oceanside tends to be the wild, wild west with updating our policies, and so I'm glad we're, after 40 years, updating our, our parking to incorporate some new technology and, and things that I think will make, make, make everything that much more functional and easier as a city. My biggest concern was on the oversized vehicle dynamic was the ability for our city to enforce. These are, these are typical hours where we're not in the office, but from what I understand, there is a overlap that last hour with, when enforcement is here, and we will have the capacity within that short window to, to enforce, from what I'm, from what I understand, that, that's going to be adequate enough time. And then how does that, how is that enforcement going to look? Is it going to be based on complaint? Is it going to be proactive? If you can go, go into that a little bit?
Typically, it's complaint-driven. We have a lot of issues in the city now, so we might kind of attack it, you know, as soon as, if this goes through, we might kind of say, attack it, but it's a four-hour window, and parking enforcement officers work from 5:00 in the morning until 9:30 at night in shifts. We'll bring people on, though, at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning to, you know, change their shift in order to catch some of these issues, and the police department can, can write citations as well, so we know that they'll be helping out as well.
Got it. And then with respect to the permit, permitting fees, you know, the constituents I spoke with are individuals that maybe they're, you know, brother, brother, brother-in-law, and their families come in, and they stay in front of the, the resident's house for, you know, a day or two before they head off somewhere else or what have you, and so I just want to make sure we're not creating obstacles for our residents and, and making that permit process easy, fast, you know, and then maybe even charging Oceanside residents a different amount than, let's say, a non-Oceanside resident. And, you know, I would echo Mayor Sanchez's remarks, but, you know, you guys got to figure that out, so I'll let you do, do your job on that, but that, that's the feedback I, but I'd like to make a motion to move forward with Staff's recommendations.
I'll second.
Great, so the motion to introduce the ordinance has been seconded. And is, is the reason why we see, we're seeing more RV, larger-size vehicles, because all the other cities around us have laws that prohibit it, so Oceanside has been the only place? Mr. Koger?
I think so.
That's it, okay. Councilmember Jensen?
Yes, so I just would like to be clear that your intention is to do away with the beach parking hanging tags for residents?
We're going to make it license plate-based, yes, ma'am.
Okay. What's a hanging tag, I'm sorry?
It, it's on the rearview mirror, just a little tag that you hang, and?
Oh.
Yeah.
You mean on the, on the rearview mirror, okay.
Right, right.
We're not going to keep those?
No. We're trying to get away from stickers and those tags, because there's a?
And do everything electronically?
It can be abused, so electronically is a little bit more safe.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I'll need to title this if that's okay?
Exactly, it's an introduction to an ordinance.
Yes, and this is a long one, so bear with me. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Articles 1 through 16 of the Oceanside Traffic Code to make formatting changes, remove outdated definitions, update street names, permit online payments, regulate electric vehicle parking charging stations, I'm sorry, electric vehicle charging station parking and oversized vehicle parking, and make technical changes to the beach area parking and preferential parking permit programs. Wow, that was hard.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion approved, 4-1, Jensen, no.
Okay, thank you, we do have, it is 6:00 now, we're going to go ahead and take up our public hearing items. There is actually one item, that's item number 13, adoption of a resolution amending cost recovery return to payment fees. I'm going to go ahead and open up the, this item, this public hearing, and request disclosures from councilmembers regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff?
Just Staff.
Staff?
Staff.
Staff.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence under petitions?
All correspondence and petitions have been forwarded prior to this meeting.
We're going to go ahead and begin with testimony by Dana McMillan, Management Analyst.
There you go. Honorable members, I'm here about the return payment fees for any return payments that come back into the city. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution to amend the recovery of the In 1976, the Council adopted a return check fee for $5. In 2008, the return check fees were adopted for $25 for utility payments, and then in 2011, it went to $25 for our payments. Over the years, we have increased and expanded our options to make payments to online ACH or the card payments in phone. Currently, our cost for a return check item is anywhere from $20 to $38, depending on which payment source. Our current return check fee of $25 is not sufficient to recover our costs. This chart shows you all the different payment options people have, and the cost that is associated, both the imposed fee by the third-party vendor and the staff time, which was calculated at a half-hour LFA customer account representative hourly rate. So Staff recommends that the City Council approve a resolution amending the return payment fees to $30 to cover our costs. I'm available for a question.
Thank you very much, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone by Zoom wishing to speak on this item?
We currently don't have any registered speakers to speak on Zoom, but this is a public hearing item.
Yes, it is a public hearing, if you wish to speak, come up to the podium, you will have three minutes to speak on this item. Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and go back to the council for a discussion and a motion. Deputy Mayor Keim?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much, I'd like to go back to the general items for the last item, that is item number 12, adoption of a resolution approving and implementing the compensation plan for unrepresented employees effective to May 2, 2021. We have a report by Rob O'Brien, Human Resources Director. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of the City Council, Robert O'Brien, Human Resources Director. For you this evening is a revised version of the compensation plan for unrepresented employees that is being presented for your approval. In summary, the unrepresented employees are comprised of 114 active and part-time benefited employees that include executives, division managers, mid-level supervisors, and confidential technical support staff. You may recall that the July 1, 2019 version of the comp plan authorized a 2% increase to the salary bands and base salaries of all unrepresented executives, which included the city attorney and the city manager, and mid, mid-management classifications that was to be effective July of 2020. As a result of the economic challenges and projected deficits during the early stages of the pandemic, Staff recommended a 12-month deferral of the scheduled salary increase for unrepresented executives and middle-management employees. The City Council approved this recommendation during the June 3, 2020 meeting. This deferral was estimated to save approximately $225,000. To date, the city has realized approximately $190,000 of the estimated savings. Fortunately, as indicative of the latest financial updates and projections provided by Staff, the city was, was able to effectively plan and respond to the economic challenges of the pandemic. As such, Staff is supportive of recommending the authorization of the deferred 2% increase effective May 2, 2021, rather than waiting until the first full pay period in July of 2021. In addition, Stack, Staff, excuse me, Staff is also seeking the concurrence of the City Council to approve a revision of the current health insurance contribution structure and caps to mirror those that were previously approved for the management employees of the City of Oceanside, typically referred to as MECO, and the Western Council of Engineers, which is typically referred to as WCE, and those changes were approved back in 2020. The effective date of the change that we're requesting would be effective January 1, 2022, and this would coincide with the start of the calendar year, which is the coverage period for the city-sponsored health plans to begin. The estimated net new cost of this change is approximately $141,236. Finally, Staff is also taking the opportunity to address some cleanup items in the comp plan to include updated classifications, lang, excuse me, updated classifications and language reflecting past practice and/or previously approved items that were not captured in prior versions of the comp plan. So in conclusion, the recommendation is to approve the updated compensation plan for unrepresented employees presented this evening, to be effective May 2, 2021. Thank you for your time and attention, and I'm here to answer any questions you might.
Thank you, do we have any requests to speak on behalf of the members of the public?
There are no items, no members of the public that wish to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and move adoption, is there a second? Okay, there's a motion, a second, no other lights, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We are now on public communications on off-agenda items. Item number 15, Ms. Navarro, how many requests do we have?
As of now, we have 16.
Okay.
So our first speakers are going to be on Zoom, and then we'll move to the in-person requests to speak. Our first speaker is Bob Ashton, to be followed by Steve Mashu, to be followed by Dirk Akuma. We're getting Mr. Ashton. Mr. Ashton, if you could start your microphone? And unmute yourself? We could, we could go back to you, Mr. Ashton. We'll move on to Steve Mashu, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your last name.
Hi.
Hi, we can hear you.
My name, okay, good.
Okay, good. You did it well, Zeb. I'm Steve Mashu. I'm a 25-year resident. I hope you have copies of my slides that I, I sent. The Oceanside Sand Study is going to be released on May 26. One of the sand replenishment options, it might be a sand bypass, but hopefully not the one we had in 1990. I researched and found out that bypasses are used all over the world. Tonight, I'd like to tell you what I learned about the one in Santa Barbara. In 1927, Santa Barbara built a small boat harbor. After the harbor was constructed, they found they were losing sand on the beaches further south, very similar to Oceanside's beaches when Camp Pendleton's harbor was constructed in 1942. They also discovered that the entrance to their harbor was filling with sand, and it was unsafe for boating. As a solution, in 1933, they installed a sand bypass system that has operated continuously since then. You can see the slides that I sent, what it looks like. What is a sand bypass? It's simply a dredge and a pump that continuously collects the sand that naturally flows along the coast and pumps it further down the beach. In Santa Barbara, the dredge is located near the entrance to the harbor, and the main outlet is south of Stern's Wharf. Final slide shows the outlet of the sand bypass. Visitors don't even know it's there. I went there many years and never knew what was going on. Santa Barbara is pleased with that sand bypass. It doesn't provide all the sand their beach needs, but it does reduce the need for dredging and beach nourishment. The savings from using the bypass more than offsets the cost of operations. It's worked for Santa Barbara. I asked the council to keep an open mind about trying it again if this Oceanside study that we're going to hear on May 26 recommends it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we're going to try Bob Ashton one more time. I believe he logged in again. And we're going to see if he could start his microphone and start his video. All right, you're unmuted, Mr. Ashton.
All right. I think I'm there now. All right. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and Oceanside City Council members. Our city beaches south of the Harbor Beach continue to be sand-starved due to construction of the breakwaters for the installation of the Camp Pendleton Basin in '42 and the Oceanside Harbor in '63. These man-made structures significantly disrupt the natural sand transport, which would normally provide sand to Oceanside beaches. If the city had not constructed the South Jetty or Groin in 1961 and extended it in '68, we would not have our large Harbor Beach with the great surf breaks to enjoy. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and other engineering subject matter experts have conducted repeated studies of the Oceanside coastline with recommendations for sand replenishment and retention. But for over half a century, little if not any action has been taken by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to provide any successful permanent solution to the lack of sand on Oceanside beaches. Experts continually cite the same solutions for Oceanside's lack of coastal sand condition, sand replenishment, and retention systems working together. The annual dredging of the Oceanside Harbor mouth is a very short-lived beach replenishment event that is carried away with the first storms that hit our beaches. Replenishment without a well-engineered shoreline sand retention system is like pouring money down the drain or sand down the coast in this case. Some locals are starting to refer to our annual dredging effort as a fool's errand. Time is of the essence. Not only are our beaches suffering continuing to sustain sand loss, but our beach community is suffering continued deeper financial loss due to the decade-long inaction by the Army Corps. I request your action in re-engaging the Army Corps as well as state and other federal agencies to secure funding to complete the selected design permitting and installation of the resultant sand replenishment and retention solution from the current Oceanside study. Please do not let the Army Corps of Engineers walk away from their responsibility to solve a problem they created. Oceanside is an amazing beach community, which not only is a great place to work and raise our families, but a coastal jewel for others' enjoyment. Our beaches are the lifeblood of our city, both culturally and economically. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next public comment. It's from Dirk Akuma, but we can't find him in the room. So move on to our next speaker, which is Peggy Walker, to be followed by Barbara Gordon, to be followed by Pat Caulfield. And Mrs. Walker, whenever you're ready.
Oh, good evening. Thank you, council, mayor. I want to congratulate Councilman Rodriguez on excellent parenting skills, which he mentioned at the last meeting. You're a good role model, sir, and I only wish that others were as adept as you are. As a parent and grandmother, I know that most parents work to educate children regarding marijuana's harms, but as a public health educator, I know too many are ill-informed, unaware of serious downsides, and don't know what's really happening regarding widespread commercialization. The truth is, the influence of youth-targeted marketing by savvy professionals is often beyond parent control. Kids are strongly impacted by advertising, peer pressure, and social media. Some fall prey to misfortune. A recent report, for example, shows that the number of children who ingested THC after eating their parents' edibles spiked from 19 cases in 2010 to over 554 cases last year. I don't have time to share all I've seen in contact with well-intentioned parents, kids falling ill, increases in ER visits, poison control calls, teen dropout dependency, paranoia, and psychotic breaks, and the huge burden on medical and treatment communities. I personally know of two college-age young men with fine, strong parents who, persuaded by peers to use, lost their lives to marijuana. If only policymaking was guided by science rather than tax dollars and campaign contributions. How can a parent teach a child to say no when a community screams, "Try it"? We've only to look at the author of Colorado legalization. His name is Robert Corey, and he deeply regrets his role 10 years later. The results, he states in that state, are shameful, hurt people, and Colorado is not safer for kids. In spite of the best efforts of parents, some parents, kids are at the mercy of community policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Barbara Gordon, to be followed by Pat Caulfield, to be followed by Nick Ritchie. And again, if you are on Zoom, please make sure that you are on Zoom under the name you registered with the clerk's office with. So if you're on iPhone or Galaxy, please try to rename it to the name you registered under. So move on to Barbara Gordon. And Mrs. Gordon, you're unmuted, so you could start.
Great. Thank you very much. Dear city council members, I'm here tonight as a youth group mentor. I continue to work with our young people regarding the importance of making good choices. We know one bad decision can have a lifetime of consequences. The use of marijuana can be very alluring for our youth. Marijuana significantly impairs judgment, motor coordination, and reaction time. Studies have found a direct relationship between THC concentration and impaired driving ability. Marijuana is the illegal drug most frequently found in the blood of drivers who have been involved in vehicle crashes, including fatal ones. Two large European studies found that drivers with THC in their blood were roughly twice as likely to be involved in a fatal car crash than drivers who had not used drugs or alcohol. The Orange County Crime Lab is one of just a few in the state that tests all fatality injury drivers for a range of drugs. In 2016, 5% of drivers who died in crashes only had marijuana in their system. In 2018, that number had rose to 11%. As the city continues to permit more and more marijuana businesses, it plays into the normalization of marijuana to our young people. Public health and safety of our most vulnerable needs to be a priority and not promoting the marijuana industry's predatory practices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Pat Caulfield, to be followed by Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Wayne Godinay. We're getting, yeah, we're going to try this person. Hopefully, it's Pat Caulfield.
Where am I?
You're on. Go ahead, speak.
Hi, I'm Pat Caulfield. As the, as a marine wife, I lived in Oceanside for the better part of six years. Our children attended the Oceanside schools and were on the Oceanside swim team that swam at the, at the Brook Street Pool. We left for duty stations around the world, knowing we would come back to Oceanside. We have lived here for the past 25 years, the longest we have lived anywhere. I am a member of what is currently Oceanside's most important grassroots organization, SOS, Save Oceanside Sand, a group of smart, dedicated members who are committed to addressing the emergency of sand loss and retention so that the beaches will be here for future generations. We have researched the history of how countries around the world have kept the sand, have kept the sea and oceans at bay, some of them for centuries, how several cities in Oceanside have managed to do the same, not to mention our own east coast, and how they have used the Army Corps of Engineers to fortify their shoreline. The urgency of doing something about our disappearing sand is upon us. Cassidy is nothing but a guard tower. Buccaneer is all rock and cobble. You can't walk the beaches south of the pier. Our beaches are our lifeblood. They are the reason we live here, and they are part of, a big part of our revenue. You on the council know our shoreline is in crisis. SOS wants to help you do what no previous city council has done in the history of the city, fix the problem of sand loss that began when the jetties during World War II were built. This could be your legacy, your gift to Oceanside, and it means making sand replenishment and retention your number-one priority. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Nick Ritchie, to be followed by Wayne Godinay, to be followed by Judy String.
Mayor, council members, years ago, Manson could not take sand as planned by the Army Corps out of the San Luis Rey River and restore Buccaneer Beach because the Corps allowed the permits to expire. Just recently, the Corps apparently forgot to check the ground in charts, and now dredged sand will only be placed north of the pier. No sand south of the pier only means further degradation of our beach into waterfront. Appears as though Oceanside's harbor, coastline are not very important to federal entities. In fact, their consistent ignoring Oceanside is what brought you, the council, all to the conclusion that Oceanside needs to swiftly act to protect our most valuable asset, our beaches. In the future, we hope that the Corps will fulfill their responsibility to Oceanside, especially as it applies to our effort to retain and to replenish the beach sand. Many of us in the community are hopeful, anticipating positive recommendations from the feasibility study you wisely commissioned. If us see this as the last opportunity to repair our beaches, without action, all beaches in the city will permanently disappear in the very near future, leaving only 3.7 miles of rocky waterfront. I encourage you to take time, at least once a week, to walk the strand at low tide and high tide, the sounds, the sights, the smells of our Pacific Ocean, much of it a rocky waterfront, but knowing that you, you have the ability to choose for now and the future a path to replenish and retain sand for generations to come. I imagine that you might sense exhilaration at the opportunity to make one of the most impactful decisions in Oceanside's history. Thank you again for funding the sand feasibility study. We are expectant of what possible solutions may be and the science supporting them. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Wayne Godinay, to be followed by Judy String, to be followed by Becky Rapp, to be followed by Carol Green. Wayne, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council, and thank all of you for your public service work and appreciate the time here. I want to bring you back to February 24, city council meeting, when one of the agenda items was the El Corazon Park One project. Several people that I advocate for, from football, rugby, pickleball, basketball, you know, people were going in and giving their two cents on things that they felt were really important, fields, access, facilities, and courts. And the following Monday, March 1, Mark Olson, your division manager, reached out to me in the hopes of improving communication between the Parks and Rec Division, myself and volunteers in the community and some of the teams out there advocating for space. So we had a, a meeting. I asked him questions about the two community fields up there at El Corazon, not the 20 soccer fields, but the two, about the permitting process. He mentioned that he has probably three weeks or so to get it upgraded, and the staff should be up there for the aquatics by then, and maybe they can get rolling on that, but they should file their permit immediately and put it in the queue. So they did that. Different things have gone on, and last Friday, April 16, he reached out to me, we, we spoke, and we got caught up on some things. This was good communication, and then I asked for an update on the, the permit, and this was the Thunder Rugby Team, 450 rugby players, 70% are from Oceanside. A lot of youth, they're currently practicing off Tamarack at Valley School at the Joint City and School District Fields with the City of Cosby permit. They play their games off Emerald at Tri-City Christian Field, but not in Oceanside. So I asked about that permit. He said, you know, we're in the 11th hour here, and they wanted to start next week. And he said, hey, you know what? It's not even us. We don't even issue the permits. I said, whoa, 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 wait, wait a minute. Who does, and where are we at right now? And he said, it's SoCal Soccer and it's Sudbury. And I said, no, I'm not talking about the 20 soccer fields. We want the two community fields, quote, "community," unquote, fields. I've been listening about, hearing about these fields for years and years, even recently. And basically, it's gone down to the point where I talked to the CEO of Thunder Rugby this morning, and I said, listen, here's what the scenario is. One Oceanside Sports, one sports group has to go to another sports group for permission to use a quote-unquote "community field," you know? And then that group that has control of the fields, one of the two fields, has to go to a development company slash construction company for permission. And then where do you go from there? And that's where we are today, and that's why I'm calling. Please try to expedite and try to look into the situation. The narrative is changing dramatically over the last couple of months. There's a lot of frustration out there and confusion, and I don't put it on, you know, Olson or the staff. It's really something that has to be looked at.
And that's time, Wayne.
And, and so, you know, please, that's, that's my recommendation. And I mean, that's my, my thought and the hopes that you guys look into this a little bit more so I have better answers for those I advocate for. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Judy String, to be followed by Becky Rapp, to be followed by Carol Green. And Judy, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I called in, zoomed in this evening to share with you some concerns I have regarding our young people, well, their mental health issues, but their access to marijuana. We have been trying to arrange for minor decoy operations regarding the transport of marijuana to our teams, and we have found that the Bureau of Cannabis Control in Sacramento does not do any enforcement. And so I guess my ask this evening is if your own Oceanside Police Department might consider doing this. I would also like to share with you some thoughts that recently came out in the Forbes magazine, because so often we parents and grandparents hear that we have to have marijuana businesses and their commercialization, advertising, and normalization because we want to do something about the black market. Well, they had an article in Forbes last week from someone who actually is in the marijuana business, and he said that right now, the black market is twice to three times as big as the legal market. And... And he felt it was highly unlikely that no amount of enforcement could ever make the black market go away. And especially since much of the longstanding black market are people of color and people from other income brackets, lower income brackets, that law enforcement had no stomach for this type of prosecution right now, and that we couldn't expect from the AGs any leadership regarding any sort of law enforcement protections against the black market. So I think we need to stop using that as a cover for our enabling of marijuana businesses and recognize that whatever protections are going to be put in place for our children are going to have to come from our city and from our law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Becky Rapp, to be followed by Carol Green, to be followed by Joe Hill. And Mrs. Rapp, you're on.
All right. Good evening. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a parent and a youth group mentor, and I wanted to bring to your attention that this month, April, is National Child Abuse Awareness Month. As one who works with teens, I feel it very important that we recognize the correlation between marijuana use and abusive behavior. It's been proven that those who use marijuana and are predisposed to mental health issues have a higher likelihood of developing schizophrenia, bipolar disorder, and possibly experiencing psychotic break. Sadly, this situation recently occurred as we read in headlines last week when a mother suffering from depression took her three children's lives. The article states that she was in therapy but abruptly quit and refused psychiatric medications, instead turning to marijuana. This mother was quoted, "on the verge of so many emotions at once, and thus was going to smoke some pot." She was experiencing emotions such as severe anxiety, impulsive behavior, paranoia, all symptoms of marijuana use. This is deeply concerning and very sad as we continue to read, only to find out that perpetrators were heavy marijuana users. I ask the council to help protect our city from the normalization of marijuana in and around our communities. Help educate children and adults regarding the negative effects. When a city permits pot shops, they're sending a message to residents that this is a safe and healthy product. I urge you to look at the research regarding mental health issues and how they are on the rise and how they correlate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Carol Green, to be followed by Joe Hill, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Hi, members of the City Council. I've shared with you over the last couple of City Council meetings, the story of my son's experience with marijuana and its triggering of his psychosis. And I am not alone. I'm surprised that so many people know about this because everyone I talk to doesn't know about it. According to the NAMI website, which is the National Alliance for Mental Illness, a number of studies have documented the correlation between marijuana and onset of schizophrenia and other psychiatric conditions. Heavy use of marijuana is related to product and related products during the teen and young adult years can particularly increase the risk of triggering onset of schizophrenia and psychosis. Marijuana may hasten the onset symptoms of mood disorder like bipolar disorder and major depression, anxiety disorders, particularly among young people. That's a direct quote. When my comments were made, I want you to know it's at great personal cost and with everything I can to share with you this story so that other people can benefit and not be hurt. But when my comments are countered by a City Council member that states that parenting ability and the responsibility of parents to teach their children is the way to go around this, I agree, parents are a primary role to teach their children, but it is also the responsibility of our elected officials to protect the citizens of the city. And while I am not a perfect parent, and believe me, any parent that's ever lost a child will tell you, they go over every single second of their parenting. I am certainly not perfect, but I did the very best I could. But I'm up against a multi-billion dollar industry, well-financed with, with politicians and the city leaders that we elect to protect us that don't understand or take the time to understand. So please take some time because I don't want any of your children to have this horrific experience that my son did. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Joe Hill, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt, to be followed by Cindy Davenport.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Joe Hill, 20-year resident of Oceanside. Imagine an astronaut hurtling towards possible disaster and death in an out-of-control space capsule. A message goes out to the mission control, Houston, we have a problem. Oceanside now has a possible disaster heading towards the city in the form of the South Moro Hills Community Plan and the possibility of 2,000-plus high-density houses in many clusters throughout South Moro Hills. There we go. Fifty-seven thousand Oceanside voters who rejected Measure L and NRF have sent a message to Oceanside city leaders. Oceanside, we have a problem. The disaster being the death of agricultural farmland in South Moro Hills. A few years back, while NRF was consuming all of the attention of the city, a 65-page strategic agritourism plan was done by SMG Consulting. It was a good plan, covering both Tier One and Tier Two issues. This study never mentioned any housing. It mentioned restaurants, farm tours, roadside markets or stands, U-Pick, wineries, vineyards, bed and breakfast, lodging, wedding venues, nature centers, all part of agritourism. Fast forward to the general plan update and onward Oceanside. Kaiser Marston Consulting did another 34-page study and actually used many parts of the SMG study. However, the Marston study included six agri-hood sprawl housing suggestions, including NRF, which had been approved by the City Council, and it appeared to be the likely agri-hood solution for South Moro Hills at that time. Then the election happened. NRF went away, COVID showed up, and another consultant, Diet and Basha, was hired. They produced another 41-page agritourism study without NRF or agri-hoods, which is now a 27-page document that you'll be receiving for your workshop next week emphasizing housing first, course, and cluster development. Of the six guiding principles of agritourism in the draft version plan up on the screen, you will see emphasis placed totally on points one and two, which are primarily land development and high-density housing clusters on agricultural farmland. Sadly, this is once again all about thousands of houses and not tourist venues, which is what agritourism is. The opportunity to fix this will be in your hands. And by the way, Houston did take care of the astronaut in the space capsule. He did not crash. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Arlene Hammerschmidt, to be followed by Cindy Davenport, to be followed by Ken Leighton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. Arlene Hammerschmidt, 35-year resident of Oceanside and retired teacher and athletic coach from Oceanside High School. As you can see on the map shown on the screen, the proposed cluster housing is colored in gold and red. So we looked up all the properties that currently are not rural residential. Those are colored in yellow and also generally larger than 20 acres. Some additional properties were looked up, even if they were smaller and had the same owners, that could possibly be combined or be sold to larger owners for proposed housing, for housing. We see that the properties with the largest areas proposed housing are owned by two unknown holding companies, a Singh Investment Property Holding Company, and some familiar names, Nagata, Milano, Castellano, Metz, and Zamora. You can see here, that was one to be expanded, but anyway, some of the total acreages for larger properties that equates to hundreds of houses on those properties. Remember, NRF was putting up 585 houses on 112 acres, one big cluster. These are the same large farmers and farming conglomerates and LLCs that supported North River Farms' development, fought against SOR, and supported Measure L. Sure looks like they just want developers' housing on their properties. And four of these large farmers have donated a total of $37,000 to various council members, political campaigns, and measures Y and L over the last four years. Southmore Hills house 11% of San Diego County's agricultural land. Please remember, you and I, none of us can eat houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Cindy Davenport, to be followed by Ken Leighton, to be followed by Pat Torona.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Deputy Mayor and Council Members. I'm Cindy Davenport. I've lived in historic Loma Alta since 2008, and I did attend the Planning Commission meeting on March 22nd, which was presenting and discussing the South Moro Hills Community Plan, the draft plan. And I, I think Oceanside residents had been anticipating the results of a Tier One, Tier Two study so that there would be a path laid out for agritourism. But instead, everyone was pretty surprised by the draft laid out. It lays out six guiding principles, as was illustrated before, but the plan really contradicts most of the principles. For example, Principle One is to maximize farmland. But instead, it's actually sidelining agriculture. One of the commissioners was visibly shocked, and he called this a developer's handbook. In other words, you look at these six guiding principles, and you know exactly how to get around the agricultural zoning. So the answer is cluster housing. And cluster housing can bring 2,029 houses in South Moro Hills in addition to the allowance of additional dwelling units, another 2,029 housing units. So this cluster property, this cluster housing concept will just bring sprawl development to farmland, which was a key concern for 67% of voters in Oceanside who voted no on Measure L to stop the changing of the agricultural zoning. So this plan really needs to be fixed, and there is a workshop next Wednesday, as you're well aware, and we understand that you won't be voting on it, but you will be sending direction to staff. So the majority of Oceanside residents ask you to please fix the plan, please send direction to staff, that this plan needs to be fixed, and the cluster housing concept needs to be taken out, and agritourism needs to be put back in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Ken Leighton, to be followed by Pat Torona.
Ken Leighton, speaking only for myself, even though North River Farms was rejected by city staff and the planning commission, its Newport Beach developer figured out that Oceanside is a pay-to-play city. The campaign coffers of Councilman Peter Weiss and Christopher Rodriguez have been handsomely enriched by the developer real estate BIA class, and what do you know? They both said yes to NRF when everyone else said no. The NRF developers spent almost $2 million to convince us their LA-like sprawl was a good thing, yet voters knew it was a polished turd and rejected it two to one. The desperate NRF developers then launched a malicious lawsuit against the three women who spearheaded the successful no-on-L measure. A law student, a retired educator, and a working single mom were forced to raise thousands of dollars to defend themselves simply because they collected signatures for a measure that everyone wanted. The developer talked a lady named Barbara Haslett to act as the plaintiff. When the suit was ruled frivolous, Haslett had to pay legal costs. Whoopsie, but when Haslett died on Thanksgiving, the NRF developer had to step up and pay the legal fees, proving they were really behind the suit and were misleading us all along. Now these ruthless creeps are suing the three women with a second frivolous malicious lawsuit. Why? Because they can, hoping it will show others not to challenge them when they try to cram their next rancid development down our throats. The three women have raised $11,000 from a GoFundMe account to defend themselves against this second lawsuit. And good old Christopher Rodriguez, who enabled NRF, contributed $1,000 to this fund. What a phony, Mr. Rodriguez. These lawsuits only exist because the unscrupulous developer knows they have you and Weiss where they want you, and they can freely prey on these three women. And now you are trying to get the North River Farms stench off of you with a $1,000 payoff. How ironic, how pathetic. One local agreed to donate $1,000 to the ladies', to the ladies' fund if they returned Rodriguez's blood money. So on Monday, they gave you your money back. Mr. Rodriguez, just because you can be bought off, it doesn't work in reverse. Developer money may make you sit, beg, and roll over, but a payoff won't erase your NRF pandering past. If Mr. Weiss and Rodriguez had any decency, they would publicly ask the developer to back off. The last election, Mr. Rodriguez, shows the city overwhelmingly stands with these three women and overwhelmingly not with the bought-off councilman who shamelessly wants to bring LA urban sprawl to a neighborhood near you.
Our next public comment is from Pat Torona. Oh, she's not here? Okay, and that concludes the public comment.
Thank you. So we are now on item number 16, which is adoption of an ordinance amending Article Two of Chapter 20 of the Oceanside City Code to regulate the act of camping, sleeping, sitting, lying, and storing personal property in certain public places. It was introduced April 7th, 2021 with a 5-0 vote.
Move adoption.
Councilmember Weiss, seconded by Councilmember Rodriguez. Please vote.
I need to, even though you just did mayor, the code requires me to title it. So this is the adoption of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Article Two of Chapter 20 of the Oceanside City Code to regulate the act of camping, sleeping, sitting, lying, and storing personal property in public places.
There is one member of the public that wants to talk on this side.
My apologies. Thank you. Let's hear from the public.
We do have one member of the public, Nick Ritchie. We're getting Mr. Ritchie on.
Council, mayors, thank you for acting in defense of all of us in the city. We have all felt and feel the destructive impact of Prop 47, 57, AB 109, and of course, Martin versus Boise. To see you all step up and craft a plan in hopes of meeting the needs of all Oceanside residents is encouraging. And now a new camping ordinance to further address the slow roll towards destroying Oceanside, stopping that destruction. Thank you, and especially the city attorney and his staff for the crafting of this new ordinance. I encourage you all to vote yes. I encourage you all to vote yes. Thank you very much.
That concludes the public comment on this item.
Thank you. So please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Yeah, baby, 5-0.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any general council member comments? Councilmember Rodriguez.
I'll be fast. I actually want to address two things. Number one, I would like to ask the city manager and my colleagues, I think it's important that we have this discussion sooner than later, as more and more things open, I'm getting reports, we have movie theaters that are actually opening up and indoor dining has allowed indoor operations at a certain percentage. I've gotten word that some theme parks are now planning on opening up as we come into May. I would like our city, I think it's appropriate, and hopefully there's support on this council, but I would like staff or some sort of direction of staff to bring back report or an internal memo on the reality and funding sources of a 4th of July fireworks display. I think our community deserves that. I think our city deserves that. And I think, I think it's very important that we begin planning that and making sure that we could put that together for the City of Oceanside. And so I wanted to see what my colleagues thought and just again, begin putting something together and bringing it back for us for future discussion in preparation for a 4th of July display in the community. It's outside, if we still have to sit six feet apart, no problem, but being able to do that.
Okay. So it was in the budget and I, we have each been asking the city manager, what are the plans for the 4th of July? We know that the parade has been canceled for now. City Manager Deanna Larson, what do you anticipate that we will be able to do?
So Mayor and Council Members, thank you so much for that question. Staff is planning on a 4th of July fireworks display. We've already started the planning process based on anticipated public health orders, you know, current as well as anticipated. We do have the funding already in the budget. It was rolled forward from the prior year, so yes, it's in the works.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Second thing I want to do, this is good news for our lovely audience. My house happens to be in the area that you guys will be discussing next week. So I think I'm going to plan a date night and take my wife out that night instead of being here with you because I'm going to recuse myself. So I'm not even going to show up. So I just wanted to let everyone know, I will not be participating in that process. I'll be recusing myself because I own a property that will be affected and impacted and, and that's, that's what the law states. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for letting, for giving the notification so early. Thank you. I just wanted to add really quickly that this is my 14th day after my second vaccine and I did have, it was two weeks ago that I had the second vaccine and fortunately that was one of the longer nights, so I did have a little bit of a temperature the next day. But other than that, it's been really good. We are having more vaccines out there. Let's, you know, get more people vaccinated than Carlsbad Vista, whatever. This is a contest. We are going to be so, you know, our goal is to have an 85% vaccination level and, and then be open and have everybody safe and bring back our economy. And then also be able to look forward to the economic recovery plan funding and see how we can continue to bring back our economy and even more. So I'm really excited. I hope everybody in this room has been vaccinated. It's been, you know, it's, it's actually kind of cool to see neighbors out there, running into them and so that. And so we are going to be adjourning to next Wednesday, everybody heard it, to a mayor-council workshop, 2 o'clock, to address the South Moro Hills Community Plan. So, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much for coming. It was really great to see your faces after so long. Thank you.